How about we call us to order and since you're already standing? Rachel, would you like to lead us in?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I think we have, not to say not important things, but things that I think will move relatively quickly tonight, so I believe we will have a...
Efficient meeting.
Public, any comments from the public?
I will take that as a no. Any board acknowledgements?
Well, one thing I want to say is, so as a parent sitting at a track meet and you see the number of kids who are involved in track, I think we're at 105 kids in middle school track this year, and I just want to say how wonderful it is to have so many kids involved with an opportunity because track is the one sport that doesn't cut, I think cross-country doesn't cut in the fall, but it's all these kids who you don't necessarily see on the field other times of the year, you see them out there and they've all found a place on the team, and I just think it's an incredible thing. So I think we should be very proud of that and the number of kids and the coaches who deal with that volume of kids.
Is that one of the bigger sports?
It is the largest.
Is it really? That's great.
Six, seven, and eight, has a hundred and some kids, so roughly a quarter.
Hundred and, I want to say hundred and five.
Roughly, we needed two buses to get them to the meet last week.
Wow.
So roughly a quarter of the kids in the school are doing track.
That's right, yeah.
That's pretty neat.
Very cool.
That's nice feedback.
I would like to thank Kim for putting the minutes in the right order.
Thank you.
I don't qualify as a secretary, I'll tell you that right now. Very gracious and put everything where it belongs. And I also want to thank Sean Willis and her iguana for all the positive press she's received for the last week and a half. It's been awesome, in the paper and on Channel Three, and it's just been great to see stuff like that.
Cool. Merger update, is there anything? I am not going to provide anything there, is there anything?
There really isn't much of an update, I mean committees are starting to work together. We met today, the Negotiation Council, if you will, and starting to prepare for their first meeting with leadership from the associations on June 15th. So that's, you know, that's a really important piece of work that's just beginning, and other committees, Superintendent Search Committee met this morning with Dan French, project manager, to start sort of generally and general outlines, look at the different options the board has and ramping up that process. The policy group has met once and we're meeting before every UU board meeting, so we've got their work cut out for them. We've prioritized as a committee those policies that are probably most important within the body of mandatory policies, and no surprise, transportation is, it will be at the top of the list, given the engagement that has to happen around transportation. And then Keely, Shell, and Lou Subin are leading the Nellie work, and they're starting to meet on, I think, pretty much a weekly basis, so. We're still organizing, I mean that's the feeling I have, we're still trying to get our heads wrapped around internally and board work around what, you know, what the work looks like in terms of what the most important priorities are. I believe that the teams that have studied very thoroughly, the two HR finance software packages, well, we have one and Central has one, I think they'll be ready to make a recommendation to Judy and I on which one we should subscribe to. So they've been working hard and I believe we'll probably be bringing that in for a landing by mid-June, which is really important, that has to be in place to pay...
Oh, that detail?
Minor detail.
Yeah, and there's, as you know, for those who are part of this type of work professionally, there's a conversion that has to happen, which takes up to a year, I'm told, so those data can get converted to the new system, so. Proud of that work and they've done a very thorough job. Technology, infrastructure, those meetings are happening pretty regularly in terms of making sure the pipeline is, internets are talking to each other and, because they have an internet provider and we have an internet provider, I mean, everything is different, so that group has been hard at work. So it's all happening internally, but it's still, for me, it's just moving so quickly, it's hard to, at times, sort of stay on the same page as everyone, and, you know, I think Judy and I both just have to be at peace, we can't be involved with all the conversations because there's so many of them. But I think the work is going forward and I think we'll be ready by July 1st, 2017. What do you think about that?
Hey!
Do you believe that? I do, I do.
And I, one thing I do notice in almost all the conversation is, you know, here's what they're doing, here's what we're doing, and here's what... And that other little district out there, Westford, is rarely mentioned in a lot of the conversations. Are they getting a, does it seem like they're getting an appropriate presence?
Yeah, I think so, Dan, it's, when I, when we talk about merger, I think most of us consider the merger all three towns of EJ, ET, and Westford.
Right, but Westford's part of Chittin Central anyway, so their software and all that's already insane.
It's already integrated.
Yeah, but you're right, I mean, they are, because of the distance one travels to get to that school, it is, and it's a K-8 school, ours in Junction, you know, there are two K-3s and a 3.5 and a 6.8, so. So I think we have to just, we have to have that mindset, and when we forget about bringing Westford into the conversation, one of us will say, "And Westford too," type of thing. But it does present some challenges, given the proximity of the school to Chittin Central. And a big, a team went down to see an international research, Tom Tguski over in Concord, New Hampshire on Friday, and we had two members of our team attend, and the new principal at ADL attended, and Marcy Lewis from Westford attended. So they're very much part of the conversation, but you're right, we have to continue when we think about those systems and Westford too. And that shouldn't be the way we frame it, should, Westford's just, should be part of it on a regular basis, yeah. But no, the work is good and it's exciting and, yeah, that's about it.
Cool. It just stays in, it's nice to know that the update isn't, oh no, things, the wheels are already falling off.
Oh, no.
The wheels are rolling.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I just wish that, I just, I wish we could go a little bit slower, and I think we're making good, we haven't made any big decisions yet, but no one wants to make the wrong decision because of the timeline.
Right.
And I think some big decisions have to be made, and we have to give ourselves some time to talk through some of the work before we salute it.
Excellent, thank you.
I make the motion to accept the consent agenda to include the minutes of May 9th.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
The one question I just, and I could just be reading it wrong when I answer it real, real quick, and I will say real quick, was just, under the executive session, we said that there was no, no action, but yet there was an action because we granted...
We won't, right.
Permission.
Okay.
So there was action resulting, not no action resulting. I was just thinking, maybe I was reading that wrong?
No, we did, but, and I think because first we wrote, "No action," then we went back and I didn't cross off.
So I just wanted to make sure, because we were just, just above it, we had written action? So I was just like, okay, maybe I just read it too fast or just didn't read it right, so.
You are exactly right.
Okay.
Is there an amendment we should put in the minutes?
Just cross off "no action."
Cross off "no action"?
With, so it, instead of "no action," it's "with action" resulting?
Yeah. I wasn't worried at it.
That was...
I think we can handle that.
Okay.
You're on that?
I think so.
All right. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Four to zero.
I'm going to pass it back to you, Mark.
Thanks, Dan, this is one of those monitoring reports where I don't go line by line, there are four sections or subsections to this monitoring report, it's up on the screen, and the one subsection which is the busiest one, or the one which is populated with most evidence, is the one that talks about making sure that we're not operating, you know, without being really clear with parents, this is the treatment, or with staff, clear on what is expected of them within policy. So all of the other, the other three subsections, not that they're not important, but there's less, there's less to talk about in those subsections, one being not discriminating against any staff member, failing to, you know, allow them to know what their protections are under the policies and what to do in preparation for any emergency situation, so...
I liked the changes in me, it kind of cleaned it up a little so you could...
Yeah, I updated, basically I just bring in new evidence is really what I'm doing, and so in red are those things that, you know, I've addressed over the last year or so that were absent in your last, in the last monitoring report. So I don't feel, Dan, and the board, unless you'd like me to go over each one, if there were particular questions that you had on anything that I introduced that's new, I'd be glad to share a little bit of the backstory on those. As you can see, I've referenced on a number of places the UU merger work as being, trying to be as clear as I can as a superintendent on what we're doing, what we can expect in the future.
As I recall, there have been no changes, as I glanced through, no changes in the interpretation?
No changes in interpretation.
Which would be a significant change.
Which we're discussing. Yeah. Last year, if you recall, I was with staff, I made mention in the monitoring report that I felt I was only in partial compliance because we had a evacuation or relocation drill in March of 2015 where the boiler burped and we had to get kids over here. And although kids were safe and it was fairly well organized, if you recall, we had a lot of kids who communicated to mom and dad before they even stepped foot out of the building that we're closing school, and so we had kids...
Oh dear.
You guys remember that, I think, I think some of you might have been in the lobby. It was great, I mean, I got to see it firsthand, and we needed to tighten that up, so we actually have a relocation drill in early June that Kevin has fleshed out a set of new procedures that is more clearly stated what staff's responsibilities are based on that incident, so I did include that in my report.
Has, that's one thing, one of the notes I put down, has that been tested?
It'll be tested in early June, so that's coming up, I don't know what day it is, but we'll relocate the founders.
Okay.
You know, I had, in all seriousness, this particular issue is really important, and the Junction, our neighbor to the west, they had a really big relocation exercise just over the last week or so involving all their schools, SXPD, FIRE, all first responders, because it's a little bit more complicated with closing roads and this and that, and I think there's a happy medium between that and what we do, there's something in between. Ours is a little simpler because we don't have, you know, we just walk across the parking lot and there's greater access by emergency vehicles to get on the campus. I have not in six years administered a relocation to the Alliance Church, that is our, that's the next step.
If you had to evacuate the whole campus?
Yeah, and I have just been hesitant only because it's just extremely disruptive.
And it's very, we did it when Ron Clapp was here.
Yeah.
We tried to go to the Alliance Church and it was...
Yeah, it's no reason not to do it, I've talked about it with the leadership team, and I think we should, because we haven't done it, we've had no need to do it, but in terms of practicing that, it might be time for me to, in light of what folks have, I've seen what they've done, which is a fabulous job, but it takes a lot of coordination to do that type of thing.
And what, I'm assuming if founders were evacuated, just founders relocate there, what about the elementary?
Same pious.
Okay.
It's a walking, so we'd have to have police escorts and, you know, closing down, know that Westford Road is a busy road, but they would, that's how we would, that's what we would do.
Okay.
Yeah. If it was, if it was necessary to literally leave the campus, other than that, we sit in the parking lot or on the field.
Right, right.
So anyway, that's added in the report this year.
Comments or questions?
No, I thought you were going to say something.
I was going to make the motion that we accept the Superintendent's monitoring report.
I wanted to, I just wanted a couple of real quick questions.
Yes.
I wanted to make sure this was Craig's, one of your pieces of evidence, Superintendent held a meeting in May of 2015, that was indeed 2015?
It was actually April, oh, here.
This one? It, I was, you know, it might be, but...
Yeah, no, it was, it was, it was, yeah.
Okay.
What I did this year was, I shared a little bit of that data with the principal's feedback, no, but this was 2015.
Okay, I was thinking...
We're in our third year of implementation, so that was after year two, yeah, I kept it in there.
I was curious, on number two, discriminate against any staff member for non-disruptive expression of dissent, under the evidence, you meet with the union leadership on an as-needed basis, I was curious, how often does that happen?
It's monthly.
Monthly?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's what it should, it should say monthly. Up until this year, it was as-needed, the new president of the association feels that even if there's nothing to talk about, substantive things to talk about, we should meet anyway, and I've said, "That's great," so it's monthly.
So you meet monthly now, and would conceivably meet additionally if...
Conceivably, and what's, what has happened, which is great, is that it's not only the president, but it's also the, an officer on the board of the association who has some oversight responsibility around personnel matters, so it's just the three of us, it's been more common, the three of us meet and just, and again, we meet anyway, but if there's things, not necessarily, nothing that's substantive, we just say hello.
Well, that's good, though.
Yeah.
That is.
That sounded like Adele, didn't it?
Yeah.
On the camera.
Okay. It sounded familiar.
I'm an Adele groupie, sorry.
Take it away. All right, and the other, when I had, you added in a piece about first aid training, mandatory first aid training for all nurses and select school district personnel.
Yeah, and this is something we've been, yeah, principals, all principals, nurses, central office staff, we have two central office staff that go through the training, I believe there are, it might be one or maybe even two school counselors, so there's a group from every building, including central office, that goes through the mandatory training.
Okay, so not just the nurses, but several?
Right, just as much cross-training as we can get, and it's, I think it's a four-hour, the re-accreditation is four hours, I believe, and every three or four years, I think it's more, more than that, but, yeah.
Mm-hmm. I'm just curious if there's been thought about expanding that wider, I mean, just teachers in general, or is that viewed as overkill?
Yeah, we haven't brought it up, it's mostly just the time commitment, we want to make sure we've got capacity in the building, and with teams of three people, we feel we can, in the event that's, that lead, that nurse is not there, two or three people could jump in and help out.
Your special needs aides don't get trained?
I don't, I'll ask, I don't, I don't believe so. They're trained in specific medical issues that children might have, but not in CPR. There's been just this, such an increase in mandatory training, promulgated oftentimes by the Vermont Legislature, and our list has grown exponentially on those things that we've got to get everyone either reoriented or newly oriented around requirements, around mandatory reporting laws, bloodborne pathogens, you know, policies that relate to student protections, health, and it's almost as if we're getting close to the point where those mandatory trainings alone would gobble up, you know, conceivably a good, a good part of our overall amount of professional development in August that we have available. So trying to get smarter on online training where you can, you can read through the protocols and sign off, not a novel idea, but I get concerned about that because you really don't know how deep people are going and whether or not there's opportunity to talk with other people, I think is really valuable, but it's, so it's one of the reasons we try to keep it as a tight group because more people would benefit, but where do you...
Right.
Just don't have time to do it.
I know in all of our conversations about scheduling and all of that, it's like, can we get another half-day?
I know.
And it's like, yeah, I can see if you trained everybody for four hours, that's a whole, that's another half-day for the whole district, so...
It's a lot.
But do you ever keep track of, like, who just has it, because I know, there are people who have CPR training or first aid training in different capacities, is that something you ever keep a...
Yeah, that's a good question, Rachel, I don't know, I'll ask that question, my guess is nurses know that information, but I don't, I don't have the answer to that, but I'll, it's a good question.
And it's not necessarily that it's anything that we've ever had to have, it was just more of, you know, if people are willing to say, "Yeah, I do have this," at least you know they're another potential person in that environment.
Yeah, I could see a principal knowing, "Okay, here's my team, but if they're on vacation and they're sick, who's my backup team?"
Yeah, you know...
I was talking to an RN, just, just so happens yesterday, this is amazing the way this stuff works, who said that CPR has changed, it is, literally now it's just, boom, 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 it's not boom, 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 wait, no, and so, I mean, just, does everyone know that? I didn't know that. Don't, don't ask me to come.
It's to the beat of staying alive, Mark.
Yeah, what's that?
It's to the beat of staying alive, like, that's what you sing to yourself, literally.
Isn't that something?
Not, you know, the irony is not lost.
So like, only people who are over 35 years old can do CPR, is it?
Yes, exactly. But you're supposed to do it to that beat and just compressions, yeah, no breath. They, the Heart Association did a campaign, like, maybe that's three or four years ago now?
It's been a little while since it changed.
For the hands-only CPR.
Yeah.
It's, it's safer for the provider, and they found that the oxygen, it's, it's just as effective to have the blood through the system.
Yeah.
You have the pause to breathe, you lose all the pressure.
Yeah.
But you think of just how much easier the training is.
Yeah.
Recognizing what I went through, you know, many years ago, when you've got mannequins on the floor type of thing, I mean, it's just, it's different.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
So that's a good question, I'll look into that, Rachel.
Cool.
The motion stands.
Motion stands, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Another four to zero. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Continuing with communication and support to the board on personnel update?
Thank you.
I sent an electronic copy to Kim Gleason, who's in Ohio tonight, as you know, and I didn't send it to you in the package just because I was making some decisions as recently as this morning, and I wanted to include that on the table, on this table. So I wanted to just sort of briefly go through this with you all, we're excited about the, let's see, I don't know if I kept a copy for myself, oh, here we go, you can keep that. You know, this is probably the most important decision that a superintendent principal makes in terms of bringing people onto the team, and we're really delighted again, every year we just seem to be getting stronger based on the people that we're hiring. To begin with, Jennifer Bork is coming to us from a school in New Jersey after a storied career working in special education, she's replacing Martha Ames who has resigned because she's, her husband's taken a job in Rhode Island, and we're glad to have Jen on board, she'll be, her particular area of expertise and focus are working with kids on the spectrum, kids labeled autistic, so she'll be a great addition to EES. Dana Cummings, this is a new position, Dana's currently a sixth grade teacher, as you know, at EMS, with a specialty in mathematics. We were fortunate to receive a larger-than-anticipated allocation of federal dollars called Title One. I'm never sure, I don't know how they make those decisions in Washington, but it really is kind of an up and down type of thing, but we've got ample resources now to fill in a position that we've wanted for several years, not unlike the positions here that we added with a math specialist and a literacy specialist. Dana's coming out of the classroom after 15 years of service, and we're able to bring in, again, that Tier Two Interventionist now to work alongside teachers working with kids who are not eligible for special education but need more remediation in the area of mathematics.
Will that be in all schools or just one?
Just in EMS, yeah.
Just EMS, okay.
We hired, if you recall, we had a retiring educator, his name was Larry Lausch, who retired two years ago, and we replaced Larry with an educator whose name is Lori LaPlante, and Larry's position was structured around reading and math, and we've just gotten to the point that it's not enough service, and so, given Dana's background, especially in math content, he'll be assigned to work with grades six, seven, and eight with those kids who are identified as needing more support. Andrew DeHande is a special educator who took the place of Greg Murnic, who's been in Switzerland for two years teaching in an American, in an international school, Greg's coming back, and he's entitled to come back to a position, not always is it the case that he comes back to the identical position, but in this case it will. I think I shared with the board, with Dylan McNamara present, that we have strategically reduced our reliance on instructional assistance for next year, a fairly large number of people through attrition, we're not going to fill those positions, and those, some of those resources are going to go, have gone to hiring an additional special educator at EMS where we were a little bit shy. So what, building capacity with another special educator with kids who might move into the district who are unanticipated, or we are not going to be hiring one-on-one assistants when those kids come in, which has typically been the case, because we haven't had the capacity within the special education rank and file to deal with that, so Andrew's going to stay on as a, as a full-time special educator at cost neutral. Samantha Ellison, I think, again, I'm quite sure we talked about this with Dylan present, we either evaluate or reevaluate up to 60 children a year in Essex Town, and that comes with a pretty hefty price tag that we, that we pay through contracts with practicing psychologists in the field, and looking at the, those costs associated with evaluations by bringing in a full-time school psychologist who will not only do evaluations, but the value added that she's in our schoolhouse, she's in office, and she's going to be able to do behavioral consultation, we're saving a sizable amount of money with an in-school psychologist, she's coming from Burlington School District and she works with the Stern Center currently.
I assume that should be psychologist, not psychiatrist.
You're right. Thank you. That was assistance from other folks, I wasn't quite sure about the title, it looks like.
That's fine. Here it is. Yeah, here's right, there's, see, she got a different degree and came to Essex.
Yeah, so we're psyched to have Sam come on board, you know, we've, you know, I've been concerned about the growth in special education as the board has in the last five or six years, we've jumped from 152, 155 kids when I got here in 2010 to, we're over 220 now, so it's, you know, pretty much a 60% jump, and part of it, I think, is that, is not having that Tier Two service, so when kids are struggling in the classroom, they sort of go through the special ed evaluation process without really looking at, are there some things we can do to remediate, get them to standard before we go through an evaluation. So we're at 17% now of our population is considered to be special eligible when the state average is in the 12, 13 range, and so, you know, hopefully with, again, building that capacity, we're going to be less, you know, apt to make special ed, you know, go down that road as quickly as we have in the past. Megan Fahey is replacing Deb Farley as a .9, Deb has always been 100%, but we've carved off 10% and moved it over to Rachel's, who is the Rosenblum, who is the part, she was a part-time 5-0, we're decreasing her to 6-0 for this building, and Megan's coming in at 90%. She speaks three languages, Dan, Dan and I were having a language discussion, and she works in a very small school out of Chelsea, and the family who required service moved away, so her position ended. Get it, or have a critical mass of children in that part of the state. So Megan will be great.
Spola.
She's a, you know, graduate of Columbia Teaching College, and she's a smart, smart cookie, master's degree. Courtney Hall, we just hired Courtney this morning, she comes from the Dominican, she followed her husband to a Homeland Security position in Dominican Republic, and she's a, was in Vermont, teaching in Colchester, and then moved, and now she's back and delighted to be here, and she's been subbing as a long-term sub in Shelburne Community School and, and the Junction, and comes with high recommendations, and I found her to be amazingly energetic and committed and smart, and can't wait to get to Founders, and she'll be a nice complement to the PE program. She has a child who goes to school here and EMS.
And is the current PE teacher not staying on, or is this...
No, Eric is, Eric is on, we have done a number of things over the last, we had 20 classrooms here when I first got here, and then we went down to 18, and we just couldn't support more than a one, one FTE, one full-time equivalent. We've also backfilled with EMS staff, with Mike, with Chris Polakowski and Deb have come over to assist, Joan Martin's been helping this year, some, you know, I hired her for 20% more, Joan Martin was our APE teacher, adaptive PE teacher. So we've backfilled it in different ways, but it's just, it's, when Joan retired this year, it was just time to take that resource that we're paying Joan and hire a part-time person.
So there'll be two.
There'll be two, and I think that, that Courtney will probably have three or four classes that she teaches, you know, the EAP twice a week, but she'll be great, just really Katie is coming to us from the islands, experienced school counselor, lives in South Burlington. Kelly, Emma Smith, has moved to Rhode Island following, again, her partner's career, sorry to see Kelly go, but with Katie coming in, again, really strong, mature, very strong connection with the mental health field. And I think that'll be a nice, a nice benefit to us here in the district. And that's a, that's an 80% position. Diane Arthur's retiring, as you know, after, um, I think, 40 years of service. And, uh, based on numbers and strength of team, uh, we're, we're adding a fourth classroom to the multi-age constellation. So, Elizabeth Reese is coming to us, highly recommended from Barry Town. Again, a, um, youngster who grew up in this area, um, happy to be coming home. And she'll be joining the team of, um, of currently three multi-age teachers to make it a four, four-room constellation. To be hired, Sean Willis is, um, leaving. I don't know if he's, the lizard's going with her, but, uh, she's leaving after 20 years of, of great service, um, and that's, we're currently recruiting for 7-8. Science teacher to work with John Sennett, um, on the Nova team. And, um, the algebra, I say it's new because it is kind of new because we're approaching it as a 20%, just for this one year only, most likely. Uh, the, the group of math educators, including those from ADL, Westford, and EHS, are looking at, as you know, other ways to teach algebra. I don't have any report for the board tonight, but I, uh, they're thinking that this will be a bridge year from needing a very part-time person just to work with this one group of kids. And it'll be, they're looking at maybe a more integrated model the following year, which Kim has been following that, that dialogue, perhaps some of you as well. But, um, this is, at this point, just a one-year-only position, and we've got a, a great applicant pool, I'm told.
Really, their goal is just to teach algebra somewhere.
Just algebra. Just algebra, yeah. Pretty textbook, yeah, literally. Yeah. So, that's in the works. Um, and finally, as I mentioned, Dana is, is leaving the classroom. And so, we'll be replacing, um, a sixth grade math teacher to work with, with Heather and, uh, with Allison on the Delta team. So.
So, almost full slate, just three, three spots are still.
Yeah. There's a couple of maternity leaves that work their way into this, that we're trying to figure that out. But these are the, these are the permanent, there's always that, right? Um, these are the permanent positions. But, yeah, we're, we're thrilled. Yeah, people want to, people want to work here, and it's great. We've got a, a really strong team.
Now, we say, well, I hear more often than anything else from, uh, when I say to some random person who happens to be a school teacher, like, oh, yeah, I'm on the Essex Town School Board. Can you get a job there? Can you give me a job?
Where are your policies?
Yeah, I say, well, yeah, let me explain how it works in our district. But, but it, obviously, you've created an environment that is conducive to people coming.
Well, yeah, I think that we just, I mean, it's more the disreputation. I think it's practice. And what, what a number of people are, are just really psyched about is to hear that we work as a district, that they not only are part of a third-grade team, but the third-grade team is part of a much bigger conversation. Especially in, in districts that are not as tightly wound around common expectations, that's a really, it's something that people really want to, really appreciate about us. Yeah, it's, there's real clarity of purpose in what we're trying to do. So, unless there are any questions, that's the, that's the slate of new colleagues.
Thank you. And no action required on that. We don't get to approve or disapprove.
Well, that's just an FOI.
I think we approve. Um, excellent. Moving right along. We have a monitoring report 4.5.
Did you approve that one or no?
Nope.
Not that, no. We, we did approve the.
Information only.
And are you able to pull this one up by sharing it with Lorna?
I don't know if I have. I think all I have, Cashal, is the one, oh.
If you can still click to the shared document, it will bring you the updated version.
Would it be on my email?
Yeah. Um, from earlier today, like around noon.
So, that's not the same one that Lorna sent us?
Uh, it depends. When did you print that? Today? No, then that's not the updated one. Yeah, I reshared it earlier.
Want me to go to my, did you share it with me?
I shared it with Lorna as well. Uh.
I'd like to go to share.
Yep.
I think she.
I used to be able to.
What's the title?
It is, uh, monitoring document 4.5. It's last year's. Uh, right down there. Yep. Yay. Yep, that should be it. Well, this will be a quick one. So, this is monitoring report 4.5, Board Members' Code of Conduct. And this is basically, well, I added an interpretation. That is a new piece. So, if you want to scroll down to the third page. I'll review that first.
Where are we, Cashal?
Keep going. There you go. Um, so I added an interpretation because I know we've been trying to do that to more of our monitoring reports. So, I'll just read you what I have proposed. "The board interprets this policy to mean that board members shall always conduct themselves with their, with the best interests of the district, students, and families in mind. Members shall communicate appropriately with each other and the public, and use caution not to express individual opinions as being representative of the board. Members shall avoid conflict of interest, respect confidentiality, and support and respect final board decisions."
You need to put the word "two" in after the policy in the first line.
Thank you. This policy, I can do it right now. Two. Love watching that.
That works.
So, uh.
It's in gratification.
Yeah, I know. Um, and, yeah, because basically that, that's my best interpretation of summarizing this policy. It's basically saying that we're, we're doing the, the job that we've been appointed to do, and that we respect each other, and respect staff, mark, um, and it's a challenge, it can be a challenging one. I know, I think, was it you that did this one last time, or Dan? But the comments that were in there are kind of, and you could probably see it there, reflective of, you know, when individuals approach us, you know, in the community and might have positive or negative things to say, that we have to kind of remember our role in being sort of diplomatic in that communication, and remember the path that we're supposed to direct them towards. And I have not heard that anybody has had trouble doing otherwise this year. And so, I've marked every, uh, different point within this policy as in compliance. Evidence is school board meetings and email communication between us and administration and the public. And I think we've done a really good job at following our own rules and the rules that we were presented with when we signed up to be board members. Um, yeah, so I welcome any input on the interpretation.
Yeah, I think in, uh, in the history of this one, this is kind of one we always come up with, yeah, it's hard to wear multiple hats. So, when you're sitting there in that parent-teacher conference, not, you know, not making it, uh, not being the school board member, even in the teacher's mind, is a, is a challenge.
Yeah.
But I, I agree, we've had less of that.
Well, and I think, I know I volunteer a lot in the classroom. I know Rachel's in the classrooms a lot, um, you know, and I think, in my experience, I'm known as like Cashal Weldon the parent when I'm in the classroom, and that's, that's perfect. That's how it should be. Um, you know, I don't, likewise, you know, I don't think any of us should be receiving any kind of special treatment because we're board members, and we don't, in my experience. So, I feel like it kind of goes both ways, where we have to respect our position and, and others do as well, that we can wear different hats, that we can be the volunteer, we can be the parent, we can be the school board member. So, I think there's some two-way with that.
My one, uh, comment about the interpretation, I'm wondering if the list of people who we have their best, best interests in minds is broad enough. The district, students, and families. I'm thinking taxpayers.
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure, you know, we've often used, thrown around the word stakeholders.
Right.
As sort of a catch-all. And I don't know if that would be a, an appropriate thing, if we want to try to list off each subcategory of stakeholder, or just say stakeholders.
Stakeholders. That's probably the more.
Something like that, because I'm just thinking, you know, the, the, the non-parent taxpayer.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
It's too won, it's too wonky, but what Carver would say, those are the owners, the people that own, own the, own the business. There's the taxpayers, but stakeholders works too, yeah.
Something.
So, if we just change it to say with the best interests of our stakeholders?
The district and stakeholder, and its stakeholder, and our stakeholders?
Yep.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, we don't want to be exclusive.
Right. Right, yeah, because as soon as we enumerate the four groups, there's a fifth group that shows, oh, we forgot about them. So, I like that.
I like your interpretation.
Thank you.
How often do you, there occasionally, you get, occasionally you get copied into emails by someone who's not necessarily happy with a decision that's been made or lack of movement in the area. How frequent is that? Just curious.
I think Kim is keeping track, because I think we had decided as a group that you just forwarded to.
No, I think that has to do with some kind of communication piece.
But it, I think it can, it could easily go under this policy.
Yeah, knowing your role's responsibility. I know it's really challenging when you see this email. It's like, whoa.
Right.
We just had.
How do we address it?
How do you address that, yeah?
We did talk about, I know she, I believe that Kim is keeping a spreadsheet of sort of initial contact and like final outcome.
And if it's directed specifically to us?
Yes.
I think we, I, at least I feel more confident in how to respond in terms of letting them know what the procedure is. Okay, you know, this, this would be the steps you go about resolving this. And I've even gotten to the point where I might say, you know, please don't give me too much information because if it does come to the board level.
Yeah.
You know, I want to kind of be a, you know, kind of not be in the middle of, or feeling like I'm already in the middle of it. But I think, and I think we've been very good at not emailing each other because we've been very conscious about what the open meeting policies are in terms of trying to just direct our comments to, to Kim if this, if anything comes out.
I just think in the, in the olden days type of thing, when all you saw were parents or stakeholders at, at Hannafords, I mean, those days are, still exist, but it's more apt to be the case where an email or something gets posted on Facebook.
Right.
Just having this sort of a sense of, like, what do I respond to? What do, and that must be hard at times for you.
Yeah, and I think, I, I feel, at least I feel, like, anytime those emails have come to me, it's like, I might read it, but most of the time, I'll make sure they included Kim and then not worry about it because that is the, the step that has to happen. So, it's not like I respond and say, gee, I'm really sorry to hear that, you know, or, you know, it's just hands-off kind of.
I don't think I've personally ever received an email to just me.
Yeah.
It's been to the board.
The board.
Yeah.
Often you as well.
Yeah.
I, I've often kind of thought, I think the two of you probably get more because of your history with PTO and, and you read the, you're always, you know, our Facebook.
In the classroom, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe because you're nice also, and I'm jerk.
That must be it.
But, uh, but, yeah, I've often thought, I, I hear you two, not often, but bringing stuff, oh, I heard this.
Yeah.
Much more often than I'm like, oh, really? Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't know that.
Soccer field, but.
And I think it's important because we are, all of us are parts of the community in different ways, and we do hear things. And I think that is, it is a vital part to know what is happening and to be, you know, to have people feel like they can come to. We are, I think, all very approachable. I, I don't think any of us scare anyone. I hope not. But I think that is, for some people, it just is knowing they have somebody to turn to who at least can provide the right direction. And I feel that's what our, that's where we can be very helpful in these situations, is at least providing them the route to, to the answer.
Right, right.
And helping them recognize it may not always be the answer they want.
Right. But that's something that I feel confident that we all do really well, like.
Yeah.
I'm not like, oh gee, I'm really worried about, you know, Dan chit-chatting over here on the side. You know, I feel like we all have the same plan of action and same priorities. Yeah, we're totally all on the same page. Which I think just is a really good sign.
Very good.
And I think it's something that has gotten easier over time because I think, I think we've talked about, I, this comes up almost every single year, and I think that just reinforces what we're doing, you know?
Yeah.
Helps us not kind of question those first few things.
Being consistent engenders trust within the board that you're all sort of on the same page and doing what you're supposed to be doing.
Right.
As evidenced by this report.
Yeah.
Excellent. Shall we, shall we entertain a motion to?
I.
Accept the policy.
I make motion that we accept policy 4.5, Board Members' Code of Conduct as presented.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
With much thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don. I like your interpretation a lot.
Oh, good. Thank you. That was the hardest part of this one.
I think it is. I think it generally is. And I think that's why most of these have become a little easier because we have good interpretations in them, and so this one, I'm glad you.
Well, it was a news, a good practice to go through, like, okay, well, what does this mean in like normal person language?
Excellent. Um, our last item, agenda planning. Is June 6th our last regular meeting?
I had the same question.
Which is kind of.
I wrote that in here.
Wow.
Mind-boggling.
Is it? It is.
I believe it is our, our last regular meeting.
Are we doing a board retreat this summer?
Well, I was going to be my next question.
6th isn't the second Monday?
No, it's not.
That was the first Monday.
Yeah, it's the first one, yeah.
Just to mess you up.
School's not going to be in session the second Monday.
Mess me up.
As I said, we, we meet on the second and fourth Monday about half the time.
Yeah, exactly. 50% of the time, we always meet.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Um, anyway, so, yeah, I was thinking, that is our last one. I am not usually the one making board agendas. I'm assuming you and Kim will have some marvelous ideas of what we should talk about.
Well, we do have a, a, an ends report that we're working on with the high schools, help a panel of current freshmen to share their.
This one to come back and.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. So, that'll be a, that'll be a good block of time.
Excellent. Yeah, that's obviously.
Do you have a monitoring report to do?
I don't believe I do have one, Don. Uh, I don't think the board does either.
Yeah, obviously, I, I'm pretty sure we don't.
If we did an ends report out, I can't imagine that we would have put a monitoring report with it.
Yeah. I mean, the other thing we're working on, I'll know more on Thursday, is a, a committee from the, a presentation on farm to school and where we are. Probably some kids and teachers, but I'm still working on that one.
Excellent. Um, meeting takeaways from this one? Cashal, do you manage it?
Uh, I mean, I, I pulled, so it's sort of similar to last meeting where we had several monitoring reports that were reviewed. So, I summarized those and included, once everything was online, the direct links to those monitoring reports. So, I think we could do something similar for this meeting. I don't, there's not a specific monitoring report for the staff, but I think we can just simply say, you know, heard about the new staff hires that are.
Yeah.
On board and, you know, for the next school year and, uh, planning's going well. Um, and.
I, I think it's neat to, it's nice to see, you know, we talk about, well, what are we going to change? Well, now we really see.
Yeah.
Here, here it really is. Here's, here's the people who are going to be implementing that change.
Yeah.
That's a, a nice piece of data.
And then just mentioning that our last meeting of the school year is taking place, that, 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 our next meeting is the last meeting of the school year. And there will be an ends, uh, presentation of sorts? Okay.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. We'll have our students who.
Oh, yeah.
Had their journey as freshmen will come back and share some reflections.
Okay.
Yeah.
All the things they wished they'd learned in eighth grade. Why didn't you tell me?
Yeah. We're hoped, I'm hoping we can get a, um, a, a different sort of panel of, with more diverse views. It's hard to find kids at this time of the year who want to make a commitment. They come out on a night even though they get two tickets to the theater type of thing, but, um.
Really? I didn't, we probably.
Yeah.
We do, yes.
Incentive.
It's called incentive.
Did you say bribe?
After the camera.
Kids who may have taken a different sort of pathway as freshmen, um, so we're continuing to work on trying to make that panel more diverse, but.
That'd be great.
It'd also be, I was just going to say, it might be interesting. I know as freshmen, they don't take CTE classes necessarily, but it would almost be interesting at some point to, to have like that, that junior group maybe that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, those who are, have gone the more maybe traditional route versus CTE. You know, those who are, have gone the more maybe traditional route versus CTE and.
Yeah. Yeah, and having, having just spent a couple hours with staff at CTA, CTE last week, I'm hopeful that someday in the future, we won't have separate programs.
Right.
And it is impressive and it's just, it's unfortunate that you do this or that. I just wish there was more opportunity structurally to integrate, but it doesn't reflect on anybody's interests, it's just the way it's, you know, structured. But that's a good point. It's just amazing things that are happening in that program.
So for the purpose of sharing kind of what their, their purpose is for coming on this sixth? Are they coming to share just sort of like their experience or more related to how well-prepared or not they felt?
So I, I send them a list of questions every year. The first year I did this, I, I met with them, but that didn't seem to have much influence. So part of it is the question, the good questions that you ask directs the conversation, but I do give them some big things to think about. You know, at that age, you, you really can't go all, you can't think yourself, you don't remember when you were six years old necessarily, so.
No.
So they really do focus, as you recall, on their, their middle-level experience. So I, I related to the ends policy, so those, those transferable skills, attributes of, of learning that we want to instill in kids in terms of communicating, problem-solving, social leadership and responsibility, being a good citizen. So how did your time here prepare you for, for that? And then there's a focus on the rigor of the classroom and your experience, learning experiences here and how to help them. And you recall, there, there've been a couple times, students have said, we just needed more homework in eighth grade to get ready for. And that, even though I would, I would disagree, that's not an end unto itself, it's important for us to hear that that's what an expectation is, we don't want to do disservice. So they need, they also hear from me that this helps us think about how to make the experience here more meaningful, relevant and to be, so you can be ready for that experience in ninth grade. More than just, you know, being able to do a lot of homework, which is not, again, not necessarily the case with all kids, with all teachers, but.
Remember last year, how you said you needed better maps for the first day of school?
Oh, yeah.
You remember that? Yeah, yeah. One year we had a kid who didn't even go to school here.
Yeah.
Came in from Milton, but I don't even know what she got on the panel, but.
What school were you in? Or what, or what team were you in? Well, I came from Milton. Oh.
She was, it was cute. It was just, it just caught me by surprise.
Yeah, yeah, we were supposed to have kids from Essex come back to.
Oh, right.
And she was a very nice, tight-lipped student.
She was great.
She was great, yeah. It was funny.
All right, so I'll finesse that, but I think our, we've got our three.
Sounds great.
And yeah, as far as are we having a board retreat? I think that will be a conversation for next time. I don't know what Kim has in mind for that, if we need. I've been thinking about that for a few months.
Yeah.
Are we going to need one?
Put our needs.
Exactly.
Minimally, I think it'd be good to, to look at your work plan. I know what Kim has talked about is, do we have fewer meetings? I thought that it's all about the meetings, but if it's simply about monitoring and no longer, the policy that you have that talks about visioning, that governance set of policies, vision, I mean, that's, I mean, this is your, this is your swan song, right?
Yeah.
So what does a work plan look like?
And all that budget work.
It's not there.
Will not exist.
So it's different, your negotiations, out of your hands?
Yeah.
Maybe the unified board can give us some homework or something to do for them.
Maybe we can always go out for pizza every couple weeks. Anyway.
I make the motion we adjourn before Dan gets carried away.
I would gladly second that.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have adjourned at.
Under an hour.
7:24.